Let us take as our prayer, I'm going to read from Psalm 119. And I'm going to read from verse, verse 1 through verse 8. Psalm 1, verse 1, Psalm 119, verse 1 through verse 8. Blessed those whose way is blameless, who walk by the law of the Lord. Blessed those who keep his testimonies, who seek him with all their heart. They do no wrong; they walk in God's ways. You have given them the command to observe your precepts with care. May my ways be firm in the observance of your statutes. Then I will not be ashamed to ponder all your commandments. I will praise you with sincere heart as I study your righteous judgment. I will observe your statutes; do not leave me alone. Amen. So, my dear friends, what the psalmist is talking about that I just read is about God's word. And we've been studying God's word by trying to know what this word of God is. We say word of God, but we are talking about this Bible. And we have described what the Bible is. And we have started by saying that the Bible is a library of books. And because the library of books, therefore, those books were written by some people. They were written by Israelites, Jews, and Christians. But what do they write in these books? They wrote stories. What kind of stories did they write? What kind of stories will you find in the Bible? In the Bible, we say you'll find faith stories. Or another word for those stories are narratives. Many of them were not actually penned down, many of them were spoken out. Stories, narratives. And then, what do those narratives talk about? What kind of stories are we talking about here? They are faith stories about what? They are faith stories about the work of God, God's action in the human world, what God is doing in the human world. So, the faith stories tell those, they tell those actions. So that anybody who reads these stories, if you read these stories, you will be able to know what God is doing. And if you know what God is doing, then you come to know who God is. So that is, that is the way we have described what the Bible is. It's a library containing a lot of books, books that were written by Jews, Israelites, Jews, and Christians. And they wrote faith stories, not scientific stories. And those stories talk about the action of God, what God is doing in our world. And therefore, when we read those actions, we come to know who God is. And then, we're able to decide whether we want a relationship with God or not. So, that description already sets us off to begin to study the Bible. If you know that this is what the Bible is, you can make your own program as to how to study the Bible. And so, we said a lot of things about the Bible, who wrote the Bible, when the Bible was written, and so on and so forth. We will come back to those things. But we began to talk about those stories, those stories in the Bible. We have told those stories from Genesis through Exodus, through Leviticus, through Numbers, and through the book of Deuteronomy. And we have even talked about the book of Joshua also, the stories we can find in the book of Joshua. Now, I want to do a little summary and close this because this is very important, as I told you last time. The stories in these five books, Genesis to Deuteronomy, are the most important, they are the down payment, they are the things that we will be commenting on for the rest of the Bible. We will always continue to fall back. This is the foundation of what we talk about in the rest of the book, at least the rest of the Old Testament. So, in order to recap this, so that you can tell the story, when you, when someone asks you, you can narrate the story of the Bible or just pick just the most important stories from Genesis all the way to Deuteronomy. That you can tell the stories in the Bible, just these five books, it will be a very, very strong foundation for you to be able to understand the scriptures very well. So, we need to get that story, that line of story from Genesis to Deuteronomy. And so, that's what I want to do now, want to recap by way of recapping. And in order to do that, I want you to, I want to go back to the fact that the Bible is used by both, is used by three different faith communities. The Bible that we have is used by three different faith communities. The Bible is used by the Jewish religious community. The Bible is also used by Christians. And some parts of the Bible are also used by Islam. So, you will have to be ready for this. Islam quotes some parts of the Old Testament. Islam uses that. So, this is what we call the religions that call Abraham, all these religions, Christianity, Jewish, and Islam. All these religions call Abraham their father in faith. We all call Abraham, in Islam, they call him Ibrahim. So, all these religions, they are called the Abrahamic religions. They all trace their ancestry to Abraham, but they divert at some point. So, we need to know that. And therefore, the books that are in the Bible for the Christians is not the same number of books that are in the Jewish Bible. The number of books that are found in Islam are not the same number of books that are found in Judaism. Okay, they are altered. But they all call Abraham their father in faith. So, what we call the Bible for Christians may not match the same number of books that we call in Judaism. So, we call that canons. Every faith community has its own canon. And the canon is the number of books, the number of books that, the kind of books that we have. Because we have also said this before, that the books that we have in the Bible right now are not the only books that were written. There were so many books that were written. But every faith community, the Christians, they went to the big part and selected the books that they would like to use as their Bible. So, also, the Jewish people went into the big part and selected the books that they want. So, and then, when Protestants came about, Protestantism, also the different Protestant groups, Protestantism also selected the number of books that they would like to use for their Bible. So, the Roman Catholic Bible or canon doesn't have the same number of books that the Protestant canon has. We will come back to that later. The only thing I want you to remember here, therefore, is that the Jewish Bible has books, has less number of books than the Christian Bible has. The Jewish canon, we talked about before, was composed and collected between 1200 B.C. and 100 B.C. And that there are 24 books in the Jewish Bible, 24 books. And those 24 books run from Genesis to Chronicles. They run from Genesis to Chronicles. There are three sections. And this is the most important thing I want to say here. There are three sections in the Jewish Bible. If you go to the Jewish temple, if you open their Bible, you will find three sections. The first section is called the Torah, which talks about the stories in Genesis to Deuteronomy. That is, that is the first section, and that is the most important section. They call that Torah. There are five books there. Those books are attributed to Moses, although Moses did not write all of them, but those five books are attributed to Moses. And the second section of the Jewish Bible is called Naveen. So, the first section is Torah. The second section is Naveen, that has eight books. The first section Torah has five books. The second section, Naveen, which means prophets. Naveen means prophets. Prophets have eight books. And then, you have the third section, which has Ketuvim, which has 11 books. So, the Jewish Bible has these three sections. Together, you have 24 books in the Jewish Bible. And that Bible is what we call, we accept all those writings of the Jewish Bible, but we call them the Old Testament. So, the Jewish Bible only have what we call Old Testament. But for the Jewish people, it is not old. It is their testament. It is their Bible. The Jewish Bible does not have the New Testament books. They don't have the book of John, they don't have the book of Matthew. They don't have all those. They have only these 24. And in these 24, this is what we are studying right now. We are studying the Jewish Bible, which we accept. As I said, we accept all those Bibles, but we, all those books, but we have more books, which we'll talk about another time. So, this is what we have been studying. We are trying to study the Jewish Bible. And we have just finished the stories in the first five, the most important part, the Torah, the law, what they call the law. And so, to summarize that, the second thing I want you to know as we go forward is that the entire Bible has two main covenants. The word covenant is something we need to know as we continue to wrap up this understanding of the stories. There are two main covenants. What is the word covenant? What does that mean? The word covenant, we have talked about before. Covenant means relationship, relationship. A covenant in the Bible is relationship. So, I said there are two main covenants. And those covenants are the way that God relates with people. There are two main ways God relates with people. So, all the stories of the Bible can be put in these two main ways that God relates with people. So, covenant, therefore, also means testament. Okay, so you have covenant, or relationship, or testament. The old relationship is the old covenant, is the old way that God related with people. And for us Christians, the New Testament is the new covenant, the new way that God relates with people. So, in the Old Testament, we read how God related with people in the first time around, before Jesus Christ. The New Testament is the way that God relates with people through Jesus Christ. So, this is the things that we need to know. And the old covenant, the old covenant started with Genesis. And therefore, this is what we've been talking about. God created people. But the new, the Old Testament, old relationship was broken. Human beings broke their part of that relationship. They broke it again, God repaired it. They broke it again, God repaired it. They were breaking it all the time until God made the new relationship. The new relationship is what God made with Jesus Christ. So that we cannot break that relationship anymore. So, the new relationship cannot be broken anymore. So, we traced that, the first covenant and the second covenant. We are still postponing the second covenant, but we are talking about the first covenant here. And so, so, so when you are reading the story from the stories that we are talking about, when you are reading the story, you are also thinking about which part of the covenant does this story address? When you read a story from the Bible, you should be able to put it in either the old covenant or the new covenant, the old relationship or the new relationship. So, now, let's move on. And because we'll be coming back to these things, now, the rest of this session, I'm going to use the map to tell you what the Bible, the Bible stories was, Bible stories are referring to. Okay, all the stories we have told from Genesis up to Deuteronomy and Joshua, they happened on this land, this map. Sorry, oh, oh, okay. Those stories happened here, in this place here. This is the Mediterranean Sea. And all this place here, this is Palestine, that's Cana. All this land here, all this land here, this is the, this is the action where the Bible, the stories of the Bible, the actions in the stories of the Bible took place here. This is the land of the Bible, this whole place here. And this part here is Israel, actually, this part here. But the Bible, the stories that we have read from Genesis, they occurred around here, Mesopotamia. Mesopotamia is that land. Because if you read, if you read the Genesis, the Genesis story about creation, they talked about a land, the Garden of Eden that they were referring to. That land was situated here, in this part here, between these two rivers, this river here and that river there. So, Mesopotamia is that land that they refer to as the Garden of Eden. So, that's where the action was. That's what the story, the Israelites told that story, referring to that land. Now, that, those rivers are called the rivers Tigris and Euphrates. Tigris and Euphrates. That land between the river Tigris and the river Euphrates, that land is a fertile land. That was where the Bible says in Genesis, God planted a garden and placed the human beings there. This is where Adam and Eve, the story conceives as Adam and Eve lived. So, that was, that is, this is the place that we've been talking about, that God created human beings. And God gave them rules, but then they broke the rule. Human beings sinned, and we have talked about that story. We have gone on to talk about how sin came to the world because human beings violated God's law. And therefore, all that story from Genesis, chapter 1 through 11, when God destroyed the world with flood and Noah, all those stories took place with this land in mind. This is what you must keep in mind. A better map will be here. So, this is the better map. So, this is the river Tigris. That's the river Euphrates. And this land here is where the Bible referred to as the Garden of Eden, where human beings were created. Okay, again, that's story, okay? This is the story. We are just talking about the stories. So, you know that story now, and you can picture where you can find this. This is Iran, present day Iran, Iran. This is Iraq. So, actually, the Garden of Eden occurs in Iraq. Today is Iraq. That's what we're talking about. That's what the Bible talks about. So, and that is where Noah also lived, Noah. When God destroyed the world, Noah, when Noah emerged with the, with the other animals and started a new humanity, we are still in Genesis chapters 1 through 11. Those stories occurred here. And then, so Noah, we said Noah's great, 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 great grandson was Abraham. Noah's great, 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 great grandson is Abraham. So, Abraham also grew up there. Abraham's father was called Tara. Abraham's father was called Tara. Tara's, Tara had Abraham right here, right here, Ur. The same place that we were talking about. This is, this is the river Tigris. That's the river Euphrates. So, that's the land that we are talking about. Ur is right here. This is that town, Ur. U R, Ur. That is where Abraham's father lived. Abraham was born there. And Abraham, from Genesis chapter 12, we start talking about Israel. Okay, we have, we have already, we already know this. We say Genesis chapters 1 through 11 is the prehistory of humanity, human beings, all up to Noah. Okay, and then, Genesis chapter 12, 250, is the prehistory of Israel. And when we're talking about prehistory of Israel, we are talking about Abraham. Abraham is the prehistory, starts the prehistory of Israel. The prehistory of humanity starts with Adam, the creation of the universe, all the way to Noah. And the prehistory of Israel, whom God chose to teach the world a lesson, is from Genesis chapter 12 through 50. You are talking about the ancestors of Israel. So, so then, let's go back to this map. So, Tara, Abraham's father, actually traveled from here. Where is my, oh. Okay, so, the blue line you see, I can find, okay. The blue line you see is, this first blue line. Okay, yes. Okay, so, the blue line starts from Ur, where Abraham's father left and traveled to the north, a place called Haran. That part is Syria, today's Syria. Okay, so, that is where God called Abraham in Genesis chapter 12. Genesis chapter 12 starts from here, Haran, in the north, in Syria. So, God called Abraham and promised Abraham that I will make you father of nations. I will make you the ancestor of a nation that will be, that will be great. And through that nation, the Messiah to save the world will come. And so, I am going to promise you, I promise you a land. I'll give you a land, a land for you and your descendants. That land is called the Promised Land. And that promised land is Israel. So, God told Abraham to move. Don't stay in Haran, don't stay up here, move with your family. So, Abraham, in Genesis chapter 12, Abraham left this place and traveled on the blue line, as you can see. He traveled actually through the promised land, but he did not know that that was the land. So, he traveled through, through it and went all the way through here to Egypt. When he went to Egypt, there was something that happened in Egypt, and they threw him out. So, he came back, see the blue line coming back? He came back and settled, not in Israel proper, but settled around this place that is called BeShiva. That is next to the Dead Sea, around the Dead Sea. That is where Abraham settled. And he settled there, and then, all the stories we have talked about, that Abraham had Ishmael first, and Ishmael was from the slave girl. So, he wasn't, he was not the one to carry the promise. The promise is to inherit the promised land, the one who will inherit the promised land. So, so Ishmael did not inherit the promised land. We talked about Isaac, then came along. But Isaac was the one who received the promise. So, so he is also supposed to give it to his children. So, Isaac also had two children. He had Jacob and Esau. And Jacob was the one who took the promise. Although Esau was going to take it, but Jacob robbed his brother with the help of his mother, and he got the promise. So, Jacob also, we said, had 12 children, 12 sons and one daughter. But the 12 sons are the ones that we, that are talked about a lot. And we know Jacob's children. And we said the 12 sons, each of them formed a tribe, a little family. Okay, so, the 12 children of Jacob, we need to know those names to be able to know the tribes of Israel. So, those children are, Reuben, the first one was Reuben. We'll get, get you these names later. The first born was Reuben. The second born was Simeon. The third born was Levi. The fourth was Judah. The fifth was Dan, like Daniel. The sixth was Nathali. The seventh, Gad, G-A-D. The eighth was Asher. The ninth was Isachar. The tenth was Zebulun. The eleventh born was Diana, Diana actually. But she is a girl, so she is not counted among the 12 sons, accounted with the 12 sons. So, the 12th born was Joseph, who was sold to Egypt. And the 13th born, who is a 12th son, was Benjamin. So, all these names are names that represent a tribe of Israel. The Israelites have 12 tribes. Those 12 families or tribes are the tribes that went to Egypt. Because of Joseph, they all went to Egypt. So, Genesis chapter 50 ends. The book of Genesis ends with a story about how Jacob and his family moved to Egypt. And so, we have this map. So, that was the end of Genesis. So, you look at those maps that I've shown you, and you'll be able to tell the story, how, how those things came about. Now, we have the people, the tribes, Hebrew tribes or Jacob's families, there are 12 of them living in Egypt. That is where Exodus starts. Okay, the book of Exodus starts. And this map alone can tell you the stories in Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, and Deuteronomy, this map alone. When you look at this map, it's a map of the journey of the people out of Egypt, all the way to, all the way to the eastern bank of the river Jordan. They moved, you see the red line? That is where, where they were when they called on God because they were being enslaved. There were no Israel. They were 12 families, 12 tribes. And they called on God, and God saved them, and God gave them someone called Moses. And we know all the stories. We have told the stories about Moses, how Moses engaged the Pharaoh, and how God revealed God's name to Moses and called his name Yahweh. And Moses took the people out of here, Ramesses from the Goshen in Egypt, and marched all the way through, across the Sea of Reeds. They moved on all the way through here and arrived, arrived here at Mount Sinai. And there, at Mount Sinai, that's where God made them a nation. And how God made them a nation, Israel. How God made them a nation was that God gave them laws. The Ten Commandments was the beginning, was the introduction to all the laws that God gave them. And just around that place also, the book of Leviticus was written, okay? Leviticus is a number of laws about the priesthood. And, and, and because the people of Israel were priestly people, God gave them a lot of rules as to how the priests should behave, as to how the priests should, uh, perform the sacrifices and, and the work of the priesthood, okay? And so, uh, the Leviticus can be read from here. And then also, the book of Numbers also is a book in which God gave them laws. But then, when God gave them the laws in Leviticus, they were still around Mount Sinai. When God gave them the laws in the book of Numbers, they were marching on. They marched on to this point. And then they decided, they decided to enter because that's Israel. That's the land they are going to. So they decided to go there through here, through the south. But they met a lot of people here who fought them, who opposed them. So they turned around and came back to their, their former place. And then they started marching through this side instead. This is the Dead Sea. So they marched and camped around this place. This is where, uh, the book of Deuteronomy was written. This is where Moses also died. Because Moses knew that he could not go cross the river Jordan with them. He could not go to the Promised Land. This is the Promised Land. If they cross this river, they are in the Promised Land. That is Jerusalem right there. So they stood here for a while because they had to fight a lot of people. Uh, the people in Jericho were very fierce people. They couldn't go through them. So they have to fight the Battle of Jericho, okay? But Moses died here and Joshua took over. But before Moses died, he wrote to them, he summarized all the laws, all the laws that God has given to them, summarized it in a book called Deuteronomy. And it's that book that became Moses for them. If they wanted any reference, when they go to the Promised Land, if they wanted any reference, they looked at the book of Deuteronomy. The Mosaic Law, what they call the Mosaic Law, is the book of Deuteronomy. Okay, so that's, that's how they, uh, and then they fought the Battle of Jericho over here, that's Jericho here. When they fought that battle, they were able to settle the land, okay? So they, oh, you got twelve tribes who have settled the land. Now let us look at how they shared the land, who took what part of the land. And then, and then we will, we will, we will say that we know now how the people of Israel came to occupy Israel. So the next map is who got what land, okay? So if you look at the south, uh, so here, this is the, the Dead Sea. And this line here is the river Jordan. And the top here is the Sea of Galilee. Um, uh, another name for it is the Sea of Genesarette. You will hear that in the New Testament, it will be referred to sometimes as the Sea of Genesarette. But it's actually a lake, it's not a sea. If you have been to Israel before, you know that this is really not a sea, it's a lake. So this is the land, this whole place here. This is the land that God has given to them. Okay, so Simeon got this land here, right here. And Judah, the fourth born, got this one. This whole side here, including Jerusalem, including Bethlehem. This is, this is, this is, uh, this is where Judah, the fourth born occupied. Reuben, the first born, he got this land here behind the, uh, in the eastern part of the Dead Sea. And that is Gad, God's land, the, the tribe Gad. And then you have Dan here, uh, the, the, the place that Dan occupied, they couldn't hold the land for too long. In the later part, the tribe of Dan moved to the north. So, uh, we'll come to that story another time. But that is where today's Tel Aviv is. Tel Aviv is, is Joppa. Joppa is today's Tel Aviv. That's the land that Dan, uh, got. And Benjamin is right there, that small yellow, that's the last born Benjamin. They got this small land over here, right attached to Judah. Why Benjamin was close to Judah was that Judah, the fourth born, was the one who got the promise. Because God is going to bring the Messiah through the tribe of Judah. So, so the, 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 the one who got the promise was told to protect the last born. And the last born was told, try to associate yourself with the one who gets the promise. So the Benjamin, the tribe of Benjamin is right tagged with the tribe of Judah. And then up here, this blue one here, Ephraim. Ephraim is not the name of one of Jacob's sons. Same thing, you see the yellow one called Manasseh. And another one here called Manasseh is the same land. This tribe, Manasseh, got two places, two big lands. But Manasseh also is not one of the children of Jacob. So Ephraim and Manasseh are the grandchildren of Jacob. Jacob's son Joseph, uh, Jacob's son Joseph is the father of Ephraim and Manasseh. So they actually formed tribes. So Joseph's name was vanished, was taken out. And his children are the ones who formed tribes in Joseph's name. So Manasseh and Ephraim can be counted as Joseph, okay? Joseph's tribe. So that's why you see that here Ephraim got this land, Manasseh got this one, and that land over here, okay? And then you have, uh, Isachar has this land, Zebulun has this land, Asher has that land, and Naftali is the northernmost part of Israel land that, uh, uh, the tribe of Israel got, Naftali. So you will hear this again and again when you read in the, in, in the New Testament, you hear this name, in the land of Naftali, in the land of, uh, Manasseh, in the land of Ephraim, in the land of Simeon, or Gad, or Judah. You hear this name again, again, again. You should be able to picture that on, in the land of Israel. So this is how they shared the land. And each of these lines that they got, they didn't got it easily. They have to fight people because there were people living there before they got there. They have to fight people, they have to fight wars. Sometimes they have to come together to go and fight the war of somebody like Judah and Simeon will join together and fight the battle for Benjamin, for Benjamin to settle the land. So this is how, this is the end of Joshua, the book of Joshua. So we know now everything that took place from Genesis all the way to the book of Joshua. How God created the world and how God create, chose Israel, uh, how God created the world first in Genesis and how the world, we, we messed things up and God, God flushed the world out. And then God chose Noah. And then, and then how God therefore chose Abraham. And, and, and by Abraham, God chose Israel to be the people, to make an example of the people of Israel. So Israel is what we look at. That's why we read the Old Testament. That's why we are Judeo-Christian. It is because we will always look at what God did with these people. And we will be able to know what God will do in our world, okay? So, uh, that brings us to this conclusion of the stories, the stories you expect to read. Now the people are on the land. What did they do going forward? How did it happen that we don't have all these tribes anymore? We don't have all of them. The only tribe we have is Judah. Only Judah survived. All these tribes went away. How they went away is what we're going to talk about from now on. We're going to start talking from the stories in the book of Judges. It begins with the book of Judges. And we're going to tell all the story until the time of Jesus, okay? And through those stories, we'll come to know how the whole, all of these tribes vanished and it was left with Judah only. And Judah became the Jewish people. That's the only, all these people are Israelites. That's why we say the Bible was written by Israelites, Jews and Christians. Israelites is the bigger, is the bigger, uh, the whole of these people, Abraham's people. But Jews are just one tribe of Israelites, okay? And finally, they are the only ones who came to be known as Israel. Israel now for us is Judah only, okay? And, and so we're going to talk about that. We're going to talk about the books of, of, uh, uh, Judges and then move on to talk about, uh, the book of Kings. We'll be talking about the kings. Because right now, remember, they have no king, no king. They only have a prophet, they have a Joshua, who went to the Promised Land with them. But there are no kings. So we'll, we'll talk about how they began to have kings and then how, what the kings did and what kind of lifestyle they lived, which caused them to vanish, caused all of them to vanish. We'll talk about the story of David. We'll talk about the story of Solomon. We'll talk about the story of how they, they, they divided. Then we'll talk about the story of how they were carried away into Assyria and then Judah was carried away to Babylon. And how they returned back to the land and how, how, uh, uh, Jesus then appeared at the scene. So we'll, we keep on telling these stories, okay? And so, um, now we know the stories from Genesis to Joshua. We, we can look at, you can look at your maps and it can tell, give you an idea of, of, of what we are talking about here. Now I have also given you here, this will be part of your, this, uh, this is part of your handout, this page. This page actually puts the summary there. So Genesis chapters one to eleven is the prehistory of humanity. So you can tell that story from creation. Let's go here. So from creation and we date it. This is, this is, uh, some of the, the closest dating that, that we have given to the stories of the Bible, uh, that scholars have given. They, they, the biblical scholars, uh, kind of project that from the creation, uh, creation started in four thousand four B.C. Four thousand four B.C. Now that is not scientific. It was, it was, they are calculating these things from what they knew about the Israelites in Egypt. That's what we know. So they calculated back and tried to put some figures on there. Tried to put, calculate the ages of the people, like age of Abraham, Abraham's father, Abraham's great-grandfather, uh, and then Noah, what, what, what will, what kind of years Noah may have. All these were calculated and put together and that's the figure we get. So, so we calculate from four thousand four B.C., the prehistory of humanity. Genesis chapters one to eleven covers that time. Four thousand four to two thou, to two thousand two hundred and thirty-four. You know, when you're talking about B.C., you're counting down. You're counting down all the way to zero. And zero begins one, two, three, three, four, five, six, up to our two thousand, uh, twenty. So, so you start counting down, four thousand and four to two thousand two hundred and thirty-four is Genesis chapters one to eleven. And then from Genesis chapters twelve to fifty, when, when God called Abraham all the way to when, uh, Jacob and his children went to Egypt and stopped in Egypt, that's the prehistory of Israel. And that goes from nineteen ninety-six B.C., not eighty, B.C. to sixteen eighty-nine, uh, sixteen eighty-nine B.C. And then when you go down, you see the Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy. All those books, when they left Egypt in Exodus, all the way till they settled in the bank of the river Jordan, that's what we call the creation of the nation Israel. How Israel was created. How Israel became a nation, not loose tribes anymore. That's what we see from fifteen seventy-one B.C. And that goes all the way to fourteen fifty-one B.C. That's when they settled the land, therefore. Uh, the book of Joshua tells us how they took the land, the wars that they fought and how they distributed the land, which I showed you on that map. That is the conquest and settling the Promised Land. That went from fourteen fifty-one to fourteen forty-three, okay? So we will begin from there, telling the story about how they lived their life on that land from fourteen forty-three, uh, B.C. And I will go all the way to zero to four B.C. when Jesus was born. Four, uh, yeah, four B.C., we'll talk about that later. When Jesus was born and the calculation from one, two, three, up to our year twenty twenty. So, uh, we will stop here. Let us consider that we have an idea about the stories of the Bible from Genesis to the book of Joshua. The first, uh, question here is, did the tribes run out all the people living there? Or did some of the people who lived there before, uh, the tribes stay? Yes, okay, so, uh, the tribes, let me go back here. So we will come to talk about those, those, um, uh, uh, stories. They lived on this land and their life, the way they were living their life resulted in a split. They had a king, King David ruled all of them. Solomon ruled all of them. But then when Solomon died, his son did not rule all of them because eleven, uh, ten of the tribes broke away from Judah. They broke away from Judah, so they became two kingdoms. The Kingdom of Judah and the ten other kingdoms of the north. And so, uh, there were two nations that carried them away, two nations. The first nation was Assyria. Assyria took the northern kingdom away. Took all the people from the north, so the northern kingdom vanished. Only Judah remained. And then, so, so you don't, we don't, from, from that time on, we didn't talk about the northern kingdom anymore. We don't talk about Ephraim, we don't talk about Dan, we don't talk about those nations anymore. But Judah remained. Now Babylon was the one that took Judah and took, they didn't take the, all the people. They took the royal house, the royals. They are the ones who were taken away. The royals and the prophets and, and those people who hold some key positions in the, on the land. The royal families, uh, they are the ones who were taken out to Babylon. And then they were returned another time. But in the meantime, all the people of this land, what the, what the conquerors, the Assyria was doing was that they took the people out and bring other people from other places to that land. So that is what they do, and mixing people. They were ruling people. So the people over there were not liked. For instance, the Samaritans, for instance. People who lived in Samaria were not liked by the Jews because, because these people were mixed people. There were people who were brought from somewhere and mixed up with the people who lived in Samaria area. There were people who were brought from somewhere and mixed up with the people who lived in Samaria area. We will talk about that when we talk about the stories going forward from Judges all the way to, uh, uh, to the prophets. So the next question. So, um, and then, and then remember that when they conquered the people, sometimes they, they didn't, it's not like they killed the people. When they conquered the people to settle on the land, they, they intermarried with them too. They made the people part of them. So, so, uh, there was a lot of mixture and mixture and mixture. Uh, I don't have it there.
Oh, shoot, uh, hold on one second.
Okay, uh, the next question.
We'll get it in a second.
Okay, we'll get a next question, uh, soon.
The problem is want to go back here that it makes.
Okay.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, so, uh, from Ed. Interesting that it seems that when the British settled American. They thought of it as the new Israel and thought they had the right to take the land from Native Americans. Please comment. Yes, I think I'm, I'm more than happy to comment on that. Uh, yes, there were people here already. There's no, no people, even the Native Americans themselves also in, if you go past to ancient history, they also migrated. In this world, there have been migration. Migration is the key to the building of, of, uh, uh, nations. Nations did not come about from the ground where they are living. No. Nations were people who were always migrate, people were migrating and then settle and then began to do something. The Israelites did that. The people of God could not become people of God without migrating. So that is why it is important for us, especially this nation, our nation in the, uh, the United States. That is why it is a value to value migration. Migration is a very important thing. Without migration, there could not be Christianity. Remember when we come there, we will talk about, when we start talking about the New Testament. You come to find that Rome is not the center of Christianity. It's not Rome, it's Jerusalem. That is the center of Christianity. But go to Jerusalem now and see how many Christians are there. Almost zero. Because the Jewish people who were Christians there could not live there. They had to migrate. They moved to Rome. They ran away to Rome. Rome was pagan territory. So they couldn't become Christian, they couldn't flourish if they stayed in Jerusalem. Because the Jewish people were ready to kill them. They told them, stop talking about Jesus Christ. We killed him. That's it. That's end of story. Stop talking about this man. And when they kept talking about it, they ran him out of Jerusalem. In seventy A.D., they ran them out of Jerusalem. The Jew, their own Jewish brothers and sisters. They chased them out. They were killing them. They killed James. And, uh, and then they stone Stephen. Remember they stone Stephen? And that is what, how they run away. So without migrating, there will be no Christianity. And without, and, and that's a story for, for, uh, for the United States. If the United States is claiming, they are claiming that, that God, this is there like the Israelites who moved to this land. Then they must take a lesson from that and value migration. And, and, and all of us also have to know that, that this land was not originally, did not belong to, 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 to us or to anybody. It belong, there were people here before our ancestors came here. And even after that, after the British settled here, there were another flood, another wave of Europeans who came in. From Italy, from, uh, the other nations, Germany, from other places, who also settled here. Uh, who settled in, in the Ellis Island. So migration is a fact that this really will change, should change our way, the way we think about people who are migrating and trying to look for a place to make a life, a better life for themselves. If they are criminals, if somebody migrates, want to come to our land. And is willing to, to work, is willing to contribute to making this nation. There shouldn't be anything to stop that person. Because, uh, 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 without that, we can't form a nation. That's the way our nation was formed and that's the way our nation will prosper. Uh, so every nation is like that. Uh, please comment on this. That I found when I Googled the route of Exodus. If they walked in a single file line with three feet between them. The line itself would have been over six times the length of the total trip, over thousand three hundred miles. If they had walked one mile a day, every day for nine months, they would have made the promised land. They would have made the promised land. Instead, they took forty years. Okay. So, uh, uh, you, you are, you have mathematically, scientifically, uh, uh, calculated these things. It was not so. I can tell you that. Don't put scientific things on these stories. These are faith stories. Again, faith stories. The Bible is about faith. They are not, they, they are wrong mathematically. And we also know that it's not everybody who left, uh, Egypt. They were in Egypt for about four, four hundred years. Okay, so tell me, you think that, uh, uh, I mean, those people who left, those Israelites who left Egypt. Uh, they were, most of them were half Egyptians. They intermarried there. They didn't stay pure for four hundred years. You can tell me. Even the name Moses is an Egyptian name. They got, they, they, they were, and then, yes, here is something, here's a story I want to tell you. We also know that it's not everybody that followed that line. It's not possible that they can follow Moses. Moses would be ahead and all these people that you have calculated all followed. No. Many of them did not follow him. Many of them walked on the Nile. They went on the Nile, the Nile, the river Nile in Egypt. Goes all the way to, to, uh, uh, almost Southern Africa. Okay? There is a theory that says that many people left the band of people who were fleeing to, to, to the promised land and rather went south along the Nile. There is a tribe in my country today that claims ancestry to the Israeli tribes. They have festivals every year that looks like the Passover. They smear their doorposts, when they are celebrating their festival, they smear their doorposts with red clay. Although not blood, but does that ring a bell about how the Israelis smear their doorposts with blood of the lamb? They cook food with a flour that is not risen, uh, not, uh, with unleavened. They cook their festival meal with that. And they have certain prayers and traditions that go back to, 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 to what the Israelites practice. So they claim, and nobody can challenge them. They said they, they are ancestors, that they are the, their, their ancestors are those who didn't follow Moses, but went on the Nile and went all the way around to Central Africa. And then they made their way, uh, right towards Ghana, towards where my country is. So, um, there's the next question. Will you please explain B.C. versus B.C.E.? Thank you. Okay, so yes, so we, the next time when we come together, in order not to take too much time. I will explain B.C. and B.C.E. But B.C. means before Christ. B.C.E. means before the common era. The common era, because mind you that there are historians, ancient historians who are actually also telling the story of history alongside the biblical history. The biblical, biblical, uh, stories are, again, I'm going to emphasize this all the time. The biblical stories are not history. They are, they are, they sometimes tell history. But they have colored history with faith. The biblical stories are full of faith stories. Certain things that don't make sense scientifically. Certain things that don't even make sense historically. If you really want to put history on it. You will find the Bible limping all the time. So, uh, we will talk about that. And then A.D., uh, A.D. and C.E. So you have B.C. for the religious faith stories. We say B.C. for religious faith story, before Christ. But in history, they call those times B.C.E., before the common era. And then after Jesus, we call, we say A.D. after the death of Christ. After the death of Christ, A.D. But, but the, uh, 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 history, popular history will say, uh, C.E., common era. So, so, uh, popular history, secular history will say B.C.E. and C.E. Before the common era and the common era. And, and the religious stories in the Bible, they will use B.C. before Christ and A.D. after the death of Christ. Okay, so we will explain that, uh, into details later. Did Levi have a tribe and settled? Yes, so thank you for that question. Uh, I forgot to mention that if you see this land here, you don't see Levi land. Levi was a tribe that did not get a land. Because Levi was consecrated, that family was constituted as the family to produce the priests. The priests will, will be Levites. So if you, if you're reading the New Testament, a Levite is someone who comes from the priestly family. Okay, priestly family. And that, those people, if you are not from Levi tribe, you cannot become a priest. So that tribe was reserved for that. And that is why they didn't need a land. Because they are going to live their livelihood from the offerings that are brought to the temple. They eat where they work. Okay, they eat from their work. So when they, they, they are the ones who offer the sacrifices for people in the temple, so they get paid. They get, they get some of the offerings, they get some of the pay and they take care of their families. So they didn't need a land. So there's no land of Levi. Uh, a more, uh, a few more other questions. Let's see. Uh, since there are many more holy books than those represented in our Catholic Bible. Which criteria must be met for a book to be included? Okay, so this is what I was telling you about canon. We will be talking about canons. Canons are a set of questions, criteria, as you have said. They are the criteria that a book must meet in order to be included in a particular faith tradition. Okay, so the Catholics had their own canon. And the canon is about, uh, certain, uh, questions, certain things. And with those questions, they will read a book and say, oh yeah, this book matches. This book answers the question, so we will include it. If a book doesn't match the questions that, uh, the Catholics have, they didn't choose that. The Protestant did this. The Protestant canon also was like that. The Jewish canon was like that. The, the, uh, the Orthodox Christians also, uh, were, were like that, the Greek Orthodox Church. Okay, so we will look at canons also. Um, then Ephraim and Manasseh were adopted by Jacob. Was this while Joseph was in Egypt and everyone thought he was dead? Okay, yes, uh, it looks like, it looks like that. But the story is in, is in Genesis. Whilst they were in Egypt, uh, they were still in, uh, uh, they were still living in Israel before they went to Egypt. Jacob adopted them because their father was sent, was, was sold. Uh, 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 I don't even, it doesn't even match. I don't know why they tell that story in Egypt, in Israel. Because, uh, uh, Joseph was taken away, I think, at the age of seventeen. So he couldn't have been married. But the Bible doesn't care to be wrong mathematically. I mean, there are so many of these mistakes that you can find in the Bible. The Bible is not concerned about that. But Joseph's children, Manasseh and Ephraim, were adopted by, uh, by Jacob, their grandfather. Yeah, uh, so, uh, that's the story we are meant to, to have. Uh, please give the Psalm citation prayed in the beginning of the meeting. Okay? So, uh, so Psalm one, one, nine, Psalm one, one, nine. Versus one through eight. Psalm one, one, nine versus one through eight. That's what we prayed. That Psalm is very rich with, uh, with references to God's word. And how we should, we should, we should relate with the commandment and the precepts and the laws of God. Basically, what it's saying is how we should relate with the word of God. So, uh, it's a very long Psalm. You can read it through. And, and it should, it should help you in your relationship with the word of God and Bible study especially. So when we come back, let's consider this done, that we know, we have an idea about the stories in the Bible from Genesis, this kind of the major stories of the Bible. From Genesis through Exodus, through Leviticus, through Numbers, through Deuteronomy and Joshua. It is a story that talks about the creation of the world, all the way to the creation of Israel. All the way to the settlement of the Israelites on the land. Next week, we will begin to talk about what they did on that land. Thank you all very much for making the time again.
Thank you.
And I hope, yes, I hope this is helping us. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Kwame. God bless you.
Yes, may God bless all of you, Father, Son and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father Kwame.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy Pentecost.
Happy Pentecost, everybody.
Happy Pentecost.
Yes.
My mercy, everybody.
Enjoy the Holy Spirit.